All right, we are on air. So hey, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody. Today is Thursday, July 10th. I'd like to welcome everyone to City of Xenia's regular city council meeting. We are going to rise. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Ethan Reynolds, followed by, actually invocation first by Mayor Herschel, followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you could all please stand.
All right, let me pray for us here before we get started. Well, thank you for today. And we thank you for being interested in us enough to know what's going on in each of our lives and in our city here as well. Thank you for the rain that came today. The farmers desperately needed that and some of our yards and the province of sunshine as well. And so we just pray tonight, help us to take a deep breath. I know a lot of us had busy weeks, but to help us take a deep breath and be good stewards of the trust that we have from the folks in our city and good stewards not only the resources, but the decisions that we make. And I thank you for the folks that are here tonight as well. Help them to hear well about what's going on and also be able to come alongside and encourage us to do what's right as well for the folks in our city. Let's praise things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. Thank you, Mayor Herschel. At this time, we are going to go in our meeting and ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilman Probst?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Councilwoman Seres?
President Smith?
Here. We have one member of council who is absent tonight, and that does happen in the summer. People live busy lives, take vacations, and also busy with work. So at this time, do we have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Seres?
Mr. President, I move to excuse Councilwoman Bait Seres.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Crawford, seconded by, I'm sorry, motion made by Councilman Reynolds, seconded by Councilman Walker. All right, we're off to a great start. Is there any questions or issues with that?
Crawford, not Walker.
Crawford.
Crawford.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford.
Right.
What did I say?
Walker.
Oh, my gosh. All right, we're in for a long night. It's been a long day today, guys. And so, thank you. And we'll go ahead and get a roll call.
I know you aspire to be like the mayor, but it's not in every way, right?
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Very good. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. First is the June 20th special meeting. We have the minutes before us. I'll make a motion or entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I move to accept the special meeting minutes as written.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Probst. Any discussion, additions, or changes to the minutes for that meeting? All right, C9, we'll get a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June 26, 2025. Can I get a motion to accept those, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Walker. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Any corrections, additions, or changes noted to the minutes? And I would personally like to thank our city clerk for the excellent jobs she does prepare our minutes. She goes through a huge transcript to give us this very accurate and concise. So I would like to reach out and thank her for that, all those years that she's been doing that. So if we're not seeing any other changes, we'll go ahead and accept a roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Abstention. I was not for last meeting.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is an opportunity, since we have no special presentations tonight, is the opportunity for audience comments. This is the section of the meeting where we ask our citizens if you'd like to come up and address city council. You may do so at this time. We do ask, because this is a public meeting and we do take minutes, that we do ask for your name and address to go on the record. We do ask that you limit your comments two to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ron Austin. I live at 305 Second Street, and I'd just like to thank the city for all the work they have done on Second Street, the curves and the sidewalks, here specifically for Market Street. There's 1,600 feet of Market Street, East Market, between Columbus and Patton, that is super bad. It is terrible on top of terrible. And I'm just coming down here to see if I might be able to propose maybe Jurgensen putting a scratch code. I know it's a band-aid. That whole street is six tenths of a mile long, but three tenths of it, it's just, I don't know how people can sleep at night with all the ratatat-tatting of the cars going up and down the street. And some of the potholes are, you know, inch and a half thick by three feet long and a foot wide. And once again, I know it's a band-aid, but I'm hoping maybe we can get Jurgensen or something. I know there's brick underneath that street, but maybe a Jurgensen can kind of at least put a scratch code on a half of it in the worst area. So I just thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else care to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens. I'm Brother Steven Gerard Sobrowski. My voting residence is at 1109 West Eighth Street, however, in Lorain, Ohio, the international city. And I always like to open up my talk. I am a pro-life speaker, but I do like to open it up, if that's okay, with Holy Scripture. Isaiah 44:24, this is what the Lord says, "He who made you, who formed you in the womb, and who will help you." This is what the Lord says, "Your Redeemer who formed you in the womb." I am the Lord, the Maker of all things, who stretches out the heavens, who spreads out the earth by myself. So what I've done, beloved council members, is most of you have received the Bible bookmark, Amplifying New Ohio Personate Cities. If you have not, I have extras today, so I'd like to give those to you, those of you who have yet to receive those. I also made it to your wonderful library today, and I was able to send you all an email with some corrections on some of the hard copy stuff you might have received last week that I was not able to speak about. But in general, I'm looking for the first Ohio Personate Cities. I call it the USA Personate Two Steps, since I used to teach country western dance. Step one is to pass a personate resolution. It's always nice to pass it between Mother's and Father's Day. I've delivered that language to you, but if you get it done by Christmas, that's an added blessing too, okay? Step two is, I've provided, it's already been published in the newspaper in the country, personate language that your citizens will actually favorably amend into your city charters. That's the step two. That's the full fruit of the effort. Why can we do this? Because the U.S. Supreme Court Dobbs decision, as we know, superseded and kicked out the Roe decision in 1973. It did not just send it back to the states, it also sent it back to the counties and cities with charters. Citizens' voting rights have been restored, even at the county and city levels. So I'm just, I'm excited about this, because we can be a voice for the to-be-born, the pre-born. And that's what I'm presenting to all of you. Digest all the information I presented to you, and do feel free and contact me if you want a private or a collective educational brief. Thank you all. I'd just like to close with, "Let the beating heart, let the beating heart show you there is life in the womb." That's by Ann on the back of the Bible bookmark. God bless you all. Thank you for your great love.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who else would like to come forward at this time?
Hello, I'm JD Muscic, 1131 Spiegel Corp. here in Xenia. And one of the topics today is the next plan, and I just want to congratulate you all on a very thoughtful, productive, efficient, sustainable plan. And then, second of all, I encourage you to, we think the ban on kids playing sports in the street, I can't think of how many hours I played with my son in the street before I knew it was prohibited. And those are great memories that I think we shouldn't be taking away. The kids are just drawn to screens, and the number of hours not on the screen because the kids are playing a pickup sport in their street. We long for community. We don't have to organize as parents, where the kids can go next door and play with their kid in the street. And, you know, as I ride my bike around Xenia, I still see plenty of basketball hoops doing no harm. I understand in the winter there's no power consideration, so maybe it could be amended that during the winter months, there's no basketball courts near or on the street. That makes perfect sense. But I don't think we should be using police officers to force kids playing in the street. And parents do a wonderful job of just, let streets are safe, you know? The Coldest Heights streets are really safe, dead-end streets. Colorado, no. Main Street, no. But I don't think we see problems there. All right, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else care to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, lady who's absent, and gentlemen, Xenia City Council. My name is Thomas Scrivens. I still reside at 725 Lexington Avenue, thankful to the Lord God. Mr. President, I rise this evening for a couple of things. Number one, when we conduct business in public, it should be heard. Those of us who are in the audience, at many times, we're at a loss to understand, and I can get a few heads to nod, of what's going on up here, because you talk too soft, or either you don't enunciate into the microphone what the net root means square is. We can't hear what's being transacted. Now, we did hear the invocation, that was loud and clear, but we're asking you to please take others in consideration when you have the power to do something, i.e. speak up. Thank you for that. Also, Mr. President, I'd like to thank Mr. Austin for coming in. I had seen him during the week, and I told him, I said, "The best thing to do is come down and ask the city council whatever question that you have." I said, "You'll be surprised, the type of answers that you receive." Well, the first question he asked me was, "Which street are we going to fix next?" I said, "Well, I think there's 400 and some miles of street miles that need to be fixed, and if we had 40 million today, we couldn't fix them all by next week." So I try to give people a real sense of what they're up against. I ran into a lady during the Juneteenth festival, I think it was, and she had come up to me and asked me about East Third Street. And I told her, I said, "That's amongst many," I said, "even North Patton Street, between church and Main Street, where the city has a major installation, it needs major work." I said, "And that's going to be placed priority before you are." And I told her, I said, "East Third Street, if we ranked ordered every street in Xenia in terms of red, yellow, and green," I said, "not only would yours be in the red, but it'd be in the deep red, maybe purple."
Amen.
So I just have to be honest with people when I confront them in the grocery store or at the gas station, or in this particular case, at a church event. Moreover, Mr. President, I'm rising this evening to ask that the city manager be instructed to talk to the PA person, the IT person, and have speakers put in this room. There are speakers, if you go to a church house, that are in a room. There are speakers, if you go to the county meeting, if you're in a room. There are no speakers in here to boost your output, so we can have some quality input, because having heard the word, then we're able to act. And finally, Mr. President, I rise to raise the notion that the Market District can metamorph into Hospitality Square. Hospitality Square would follow after Fountain Square in Cincinnati, St. Peter's Square, you know where that is, Nativity Square, Times Square, Market Square, Tiananmen Square, Courthouse Square, Public Square, and in Ramallah, the Square of the Lions. And then finally, it'd be something like Manger Square. We could metamorph into something very good here. We have an excellent opportunity now for a legacy that will be unchangeable, since Ohio was carved out of the Northwest Territory in 1803, and Xenia was part of the Green County, Montgomery County, Franklin County, Green County, Montgomery County. It ran from Lake Erie to the Ohio River. So we have a great legacy to leave if we in fact decide to metamorph into something where everybody can get on board and share. I know diversity is not a good term anymore, or inclusion, but where everybody would have a piece of the rock and would have a stake in the game. Mr. President, thank you for your time, and thank you, council, for your consideration.
Thank you much. Anyone else care to come forward?
Hello, Heather Shannon, 3832, please. Thank you, Mr. President, for inviting me to speak during the public comment. I want to thank the council and thank you for your service. I know you work very hard, and I didn't realize how hard you all work until I started going to city council meetings, so thank you for that. I'm running for Green County Probate Judge in next year's Republican primary, and I'm running because I have the right experience for probate judge. I've seen probate from every perspective. I'm currently a probate court magistrate. I work in Montgomery County, but I have been a Green County gal for over 40 years now. I have presided over 2,100 probate cases. I am leading teams on self-help centers. I've created materials that help people navigate through the probate process, and a company's actually taken that and turned it into a TurboTax for probate. So it will make life much easier for people who are not familiar with the probate process. Prior to that, I was an attorney for 15 years, practicing primarily in the areas of probate and family law, and I also served as guardian for those most vulnerable. So I offer, I believe, a rare perspective that I think Green County can benefit from. I look forward to seeing more of you in the future, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else care to come forward? All right, I'm gonna close the audience comments portion of our meeting. We're gonna go on to old business. Our first item under old business, Resolution 2025-20. This was tabled on March 27, 2025, and staff recommends that this item to be remain tabled. So no action needed on that item. Moves us to new business. Our first item in new business is Ordinance 2025-16, titled An Emergency. This is amending Ordinance 2025-13 to provide appropriations for current expenses, other expenditures for the City of Xenia for fiscal year ending December 31 of 2025, declaring an emergency. At this time, we'll turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Mr. Ryan Duke.
Thank you, Council President. We're requesting additional appropriations for three different purposes this evening. The first is that the city was recently awarded a grant from the Ohio EPA. This is related to improvements at the Central State Campus. Some of the dollars are to be used for installing to military at the water tower and on the campus that will help us to better monitor some of the facilities or some of the infrastructure there on their campus. The dollars would also fund a study to help us and the Central State Administration to better assess what's required on their campus to bring their infrastructure up to a better status than where it exists today. The grant in total is for $147,455.67. It will be reimbursed to the city, and so we're requesting tonight that council appropriate the dollars, so we can go ahead and spend the dollars for the study and for the instrumentation to be installed there on the campus that will then be reimbursed by the Ohio EPA. So no dollars from the water funds specifically will be used for that, but rather all funded through this grant. We're also asking for additional appropriations for fees, for outside legal fees. There were some unexpected fees that were higher than what we had expected at the beginning of the year. Some of those related to labor issues, the state employee relations board, some issues that we've had to work through with them. Also, things like Market District Council, some work in the East Sid, an energy special improvement district. And so we're requesting this evening that an additional $40,000 be appropriated in anticipation of additional specialized legal services. That should cover us for the remainder of the year. And then we're also requesting additional appropriations for some dollars that we actually received from loans that were provided for housing grants, housing improvement grants years ago. Sometimes as a house is sold, or actually somebody sometimes becomes deceased, and the estate is settled, we actually then receive the dollars that were given to rehab that home sometimes 20 years ago. And so it's difficult to anticipate when we're going to receive those dollars, but we did receive $43,000 for a couple of different loans that came back to the city here recently. We're required to use those for very specific housing improvement purposes. We've partnered with the county for many years now for them to administer the CHIP grant, and so we're requesting tonight an appropriation be approved for $43,037.38 that would then be sent to the county for use in that housing improvement program. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of those three items.
All right, thank you, Finance Director, Mr. Duke. Any questions for Ryan, Councilman Reynolds?
Mr. Duke, I have two questions. When will the survey be done for the CSU? Do we have like a date or time?
The study?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah. Our priority will be the telemetry, installing the SCADA system connection, because that poses the most significant threat to us. There's not a specific deadline on when the monies have to be spent, based on what we've seen to this point, but our, once we get that SCADA system installed, priority would then shift to doing that study, perhaps by the end of the year, but I wouldn't guarantee that. Some of it will come back to how quickly we can turn around and access everyone at the universities.
Okay. And my next question is, is it the EPA or is it H2 Ohio?
It's H2 Ohio, as administered by the Ohio EPA.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roughly, how much is the survey?
I think the SCADA installation was estimated around $30,000.
Yeah, so it's $115,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
We'll get as much as we can for that amount, whatever is left after we get the telemetry system installed, but we felt like that would be enough to get a pretty comprehensive evaluation of their system.
Thank you.
I just want to really stress, that's 100% grant-funded. That's no city dollars. The only investment we have is really staff time to help with the administration of that.
Right, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
On this CHIP program, what committee is facilitating those funds in their direction?
It would probably fall under the domain of our Economic Development Committee. It's probably where it's best housed. Typically, you know, when we re-up that program, we bring that back to all of council. But, yeah, I don't think we've necessarily assigned that to a committee, but that's probably the one that it makes more sense of.
All right, thank you.
Does that answer your question? It is very good. Anyone else? C9 will ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved as an emergency?
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Probst. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item under new business is Ordinance 2025-17. This is an introduction tonight, amending Ordinance 2022-22, Ordinance 2022-23, Ordinance 2023-07, and Ordinance 2023-20 to cease the collection of street lighting assessments in the street lighting districts numbers one through four within the 2024 tax year. So we're gonna turn the floor now over to Madam Law Director. Thank you.
Good evening. As you recall, last month, you passed the assessment ordinance to begin collecting a citywide streetlight assessment with tax year 2025, meaning it'll be assessed for 2025, collected in 2026. The issue that we had is council has previously established four street lighting districts, competition by the subdividers, the developers, of four subdivisions within the city. There were two done in 2002, Street Light District Number One, Street Light District Number Two, and that was Sterling Green and Greenway. And then in 2023, you did two more, and that was for Summerbrook South and Eden Bridge. What this resolution does, excuse me, what this ordinance does is it amends those four ordinances for those four streetlight districts to end the assessments, the street lighting assessments, with the 2024 tax year, meaning the assessments that were placed in 2024 and collected in 2025, that will be the last they pay at Street Light Districts one, two, three, and four. Starting with tax year 2025, they will pay the citywide streetlight assessment as everyone else is. So this was just kind of a final step to clean that up. What this ordinance specifically does is go into the four assessment ordinances for those four districts and just amends the time period. Instead of those assessments ending in 2027, they will now end in 2024. And then everyone, starting with tax year 2025, will be on the same page.
All right, thank you. Questions for Madam Law Director tonight?
All right.
Thank you very much. This time, I'll ask for an introduction. Who would like to do that?
Somebody.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Thank you very much. Our next item tonight, under new business resolution, 2025-34, this is authorizing the purchase of a John Deere leaf loader for public service department from the Best Equipment Company through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. So we'll turn the floor over to our city manager, Mr. Merriman, for explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As council may recall, included in this year's budget was consideration for replacement of this 1997 leaf loader unit. This particular piece of equipment has already been refurbished once, with that included the installation of new blower system and bearings. That was about five years ago. With the additional use, the leaf loader has now exceeded its practical life. Staff is recommending that the current leaf loader be offered for sale at auction, as authorized by our city code section 214.06B, and we feel there's really no trade-in value. There was none offered anyway, so that this disposition method makes the most sense. And with that, we are recommending that council authorize a purchase of a new John Deere ODB LTC 600 model leaf loader, which can be purchased through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. Again, that's with a bid through Best Equipment Company Incorporated. This would be at a cost of $77,985.29. Please recall that we included about $80,000 in this year's budget for that purpose, so this will fall within that budget. According to officials at Best Equipment Company, the new leaf loader should be available and ready for delivery by November. If it's purchased tonight, so it'll be right on the cusp of being able to use that equipment this year. Probably have already started collections by that point, but the sooner we can get it into service, the better. So time is of the essence to be able to maintain our schedule with our leaf season. As noted in the cost proposal from the vendor, there is a standard manufacturer's warranty that is included as part of the purchase of the unit, so we'll have that coverage. So we're requesting authorization to make the purchase and dispose of the unit and put this piece of equipment into service this fall, hopefully.
All right, thank you, Mr. Merriman. Any questions for city manager on this purchase? Councilman Reynolds?
Just one. How long do you expect this to last? The last one was from '97.
Yeah, I would hope with proper maintenance, 15 to 20 years, but it's, nothing lasts quite as well as they used to, but we've got a very good mechanic system in place with the staff that we have, and so we do take every opportunity to maintain these on a regular basis.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. We're gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to authorize the purchase of a leaf loader for public service. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilman Reynolds, seconded by Councilman Walker. Is that fair? All right. All right. Any other questions? We're going to go for a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item, under New Business Resolution 2025-35, amending the City of Xenia's Electric Aggregation Program Plan of Operation and Governance and the City of Xenia's Natural Gas Aggregation Program and Plan of Operation and Governance.
At this time, we'll turn the floor back over to our Finance Director, Mr. Duke, for an explanation.
Thank you, Council President. The electorate, the city electorate has approved aggregation programs for both electric and natural gas. The city council has adopted plans of governance for both natural gas and electric, and we have for a number of years implemented plans for both of those utilities. The electric aggregation program has been a tremendous success. We've saved the ratepayers a significant amount of money through the aggregation program and paying rates that are far more advantageous than the standard rate from the supplier, in this case AES. The aggregation, or natural gas aggregation plan, however, has not been as successful. And the reality is that commodity is just a little more difficult to predict pricing. There are some, there are some contingencies typically built into those rates that don't make it as advantageous to aggregate, and this is what same way as we aggregate electric. And it has not necessarily saved our ratepayers' money over the last number of years, really the last three cycles. In each of the three cycles, it has not been advantageous to aggregate natural gas. That doesn't mean that at some point in the future, it won't be advantageous, but our recommendation to council is staff is that we continue the electric aggregation program, which is up near the end of the year. We would bring back a request that council approve. We don't typically have council approve specific rates because it's a daily refreshing of rates, and so we basically say, they're estimated to be in this range. Are you okay with us executing a contract if the rates are somewhere within this range of possibilities? And then we would execute that contract once we get the refreshed rates. So we'll bring some estimates back to council here within the next couple of months of where we think those rates would land, and ask for authorization to pursue those contracts. On the natural gas aggregation, our recommendation would be that we pause that program for some period of time and not do an aggregation citywide of that natural gas utility. We undergo some efforts to communicate to the public some of the options they have, the ApplesApples website, where they can go out and select for themselves a supplier that may be a better rate than what they're going to get through CenterPoint, for example. So we would do some campaign, probably put some notices, some utility bills, to try to encourage people to go that route. But we think that it would be advantageous for us to pause that until such a time as we have more confidence that the program would actually save ratepayers' money. In conversation with the Law Director about how to achieve that, she's recommended that we place provision in the, in the plan of governance that essentially gives the city clear discretion in whether or not we would pursue that program for that period of time. And so there's a resolution for you this evening that would amend that aggregation program, both for natural gas and electric, so it's adding the same provision that gives some discretion to both programs. And this would allow us then to evaluate whether or not we think that the program will actually be something worth pursuing for the public. So we're requesting that change. It'll give us the flexibility to evaluate the programs. We would bring, regardless of this discretion, we would bring back to council estimates on what those rates would be and communicate with council on your preference on whether we pursue a plan or don't pursue a plan, but this gives us some discretion about whether or not we participate in the program as we have the last number of cycles. So that's the intent. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the aggregation programs.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duke. Questions for Mr. Duke or comments? Mayor?
Sure. So Ryan, and I know that this is what's on the, like you said, we're going to be looking at these things, but is the, if we leave the aggregation program, is the default to go back to CenterPoint?
Yeah, the default would be the CenterPoint standard rate, which in reality has actually been lower than our aggregation rate for most of the time where we've been aggregating natural gas. So I would guess, in a five-year period, probably 60 months, I'm going to guess 48 of them. It would have been better to be in the standard program. And some of that happened because there was bankruptcy filed by our aggregation company, the company who we had at one point entered a contract, and we ended up being smack in the middle of COVID when we were renewing rates, and some things, you know, happened that made that, you know, maybe skewed that a little bit, but more often than not, the CenterPoint standard rate has been better than the rate that we've achieved.
And then when, if you guys come back and propose that we leave aggregation, when potentially would that be effective?
It would be effective, I think, in November of this year. So we're coming right up on that timeframe. I think gas is up in November, I think the electric is up at the end of December. So the, yeah, we would, we would need to make decisions in fairly short order, and we can bring back some specific rates, have our consultant refresh, you know, where they think things, where things are. They'd already sent us the natural gas rates a couple of months ago, and they just simply weren't attractive. So I don't, I don't envision that changing.
Yeah. What's your sense from the other municipalities, Beaver Creek, Fairborn, and some of the other folks in Centerville, are they leaving gas aggregation too, or have you had any discussions with them?
Yeah, it's all over the map. I mean, some have just never aggregated because they've, they've assumed that it wasn't going to be beneficial. Others have, have partnered with other consortiums, so the Miami Valley Communications Council, for example, has a number of municipalities who all participate together. There are some counties, you know, who aggregate together, so there are a number of different routes that cities go, so it's, it's a bit, it's all over the map. There are far more municipalities who are aggregating electric than there are who are aggregating natural gas. So there are very few now in the region who are not aggregating electric, because it is clearly beneficial to the public. It's a, it's a much more mixed bag when it comes to natural gas aggregation.
Well, everybody uses electric, not everybody uses gas. So your pool for electrics is bigger, you're going to get better prices.
So, questions? Mr. Duke?
Yeah. Mr. Duke, I have a question. How, how is the electric aggregation program beneficial to the provider? I was just wondering, from the provider's perspective, why, why are they even doing it?
So there was legislation at the state level which deregulated these utilities, which basically said AES, for example, you have to provide the actual distribution of the electric to each property, and there has to be an open competition for the supply of those kilowatts or that electric supply. So it's really required by law that there is some sort of competitive process that the consumers are able to participate in. So even if we don't do it as a city, individuals can go out to the ApplesApples website and pick their own supplier. So it's really regulated at the state level, say distributor, you can charge your distribution fee, and all those are run through PUCO, so PUCO decides what's a fair distribution fee. And then there's a open, you know, competition for the supply, where residents can go out and choose whoever is going to supply the best rates.
If you win the supply contract for the aggregation program, you've just locked in all those customer fees.
Agreed.
Customer A can't go with that company, and Customer B goes with that company, they're all yours.
Okay, I think I understand. So there is a benefit to the provider for us participating, correct?
There's a benefit.
If we aggregate, they're locking in all those.
There's a benefit to the supplier who wins the bid, because they're guaranteeing, to some extent, a certain level of business. People can still opt out of our program and go get their own, but the number of people who actually do that is fairly minimal, so they have a pretty good idea that they're going to get a good block of business. So it's advantageous to the supplier. I wouldn't necessarily say it's advantageous to the distributor, but they're required by law to allow people to shop that, those suppliers.
Okay. So thinking outside of the box, who is the negotiator for our city on this aggregation program in specific?
Yeah, so Palmer Energy is our consultant, and they, they represent probably half the state. They have a huge book of business, so they are very experienced in this. They have relationships with all the major players, all the major suppliers. They know where the market is and what the rates, you know, should be. So they, they really advise us. We, you know, we aren't experts in that field. So they, they have a lot of people who monitor, you know, really at the federal level where they think a lot of these rates are going. They say, hey, this is the best time for you to buy, let's go ahead and get rates and lock this in. So they advise us on timing of locking it in and let us know what they think is a fair and good rate.
Very good, thank you. And one other question. So are we in a position to ask for added concessions? So when you, if you're, if you're doing a rate program, why are we, could we as a city ask for infrastructure improvements within the rate? So you go, okay, here's the rate, and along with that, we'd like to see some improvements with better infrastructure. It's crazy how much electricity I lose in a year's time, just sitting where I live. I find it amazing that, you know, obviously we're, I'm less densely populated for where I live, but the reality of it is, I don't want to make this about just me, but the entire infrastructure for our town is, also should be, I mean, is there any opportunity of putting that?
Not, not really. We don't have, we don't have that leverage, because remember, the deal that we're making is with the supplier, the infrastructure is really on the distributor. So we aren't entering into a contract with AES, who is primarily responsible for all that infrastructure. We're entering into a contract with the supplier, so it, yeah, we don't really have any leverage as it relates to aggregation. There are some other things, you know, that we, you know, that we, we do have some leverage in, and, you know, right-of-way permits and things like that, but I think it's pretty limited. I could let the city manager speak to that, but I think our, our leverage with AES is somewhat limited.
Well, thank you. I, I realize I, I'm just trying.
Yeah, no, I think if I can, I think your concern is valid. I think the age of Xenia and the age of much of the electric infrastructure in Xenia is notable and is problematic. And I can point out an example to our immediate west. The entire block of, of East Main Street here has extremely dated infrastructure. Some of it was replaced a few years ago, but a lot of it that connects to the buildings back behind this block of East Main Street is extremely dated, and there, there's very limited power supply to that block. When we were in the design process with Market District, there's a lot of conversation about the ability to supply electricity to that block in the, in the concentration that would be needed for the development. So there are some delivery concerns because of the outdated nature of the equipment, as well as just the volume of electricity that's able to get into the city. So we've had, I'd say some preliminary questions with some of our concerns that have been raised with some of our contacts with AES. I think the, if it's council's pleasure, that's something we can, you know, try to continue to pursue with them and see if we can get some additional investments to help to person this condition. So I think your concern is warranted. It's definitely warranted from an industrial development standpoint, because we have some real limitations on the electric supply capacity of both of our industrial parks. That is without question an inhibiting factor, but I think it carries over beyond just that.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you. I would like to note that as council, we've always charged our staff to spread our dollar as far as possible when we come to run the city, but we've also asked them to put us in these aggregational programs to help citizens save money on their utility bills. These were not mandated by us to do that. This took staff time and staff resources to do that. So I do thank you for that. I know there's always a risk when it comes to futures and expenses, so I do want to thank you for their time and effort on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I will seek a motion for the amending of the aggregational program and seek approval. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by?
Walker.
Councilman Walker, thank you. I can't hear very good over there.
Sorry.
It's just all moving. All right, so very good. Do we have any other comments or questions, suggestions on this? We'll seek a, a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very, very much. Our next item is Resolution 2025-36. This is accepting an H2O Ohio Fund grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for Central State University's planning project. So we will go back to Mr. Merriman for an explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As council is aware, our staff has been in discussions with the Ohio EPA as well as central state officials concerning the state of the university's water and sewer utility infrastructure. While the operation and maintenance of the water distribution and sewer collection systems throughout the campus are the responsibility of the university and not the city, the city is the sole provider of water to the campus, and the connections between our system and the university's system do create the possibility of adverse impacts to our infrastructure and our service delivery capacity if there are problems with the campus systems. And we've discussed with council in the past, if they have a major water main break, that can rapidly deplete our ability to provide services throughout our community, because the water is frankly going there first before it reaches the southern half of the city, as one example. Also, we've discussed with council that we've stressed with the Ohio EPA and central state officials that if the city is to continue providing utility services to the campus in the future, an assessment of the university's water distribution and sewer collection systems must be conducted by a qualified engineering consultant and a plan for long-term maintenance form-related. Further, we feel it's urgently necessary to connect Central State's elevated water storage tank on their campus to the city's supervisory control and data acquisition systems or SCADA systems, which will provide alarm notifications at our city water treatment plant that our personnel can react to proactively once, you know, once we detect a potential issue, where now we do not have that ability, because there's no connectivity with their tower. And this would help us to intercede and prevent further problems with pressure loss in our system. To this end, trying to address these issues, Ohio EPA recently contacted the city about the possibility of funding projects. They're an H2O Ohio grant program. The Ohio EPA officials are making available $147,455.67 in unencumbered program funds initially budgeted for other statewide projects, which are now available, and they're looking to redirect to the city for these projects with Central State. This is a 100% reimbursable grant. As we indicated earlier, there's no local match associated with this. It is necessary for the city to be the grant recipient, because the program is oriented toward providing resources to water suppliers, not necessarily the folks who are using the system. So we are therefore requesting council authorization to enter into an agreement to secure the H2O Ohio grant. Additionally, we will need an access agreement with Central State for the equipment installation and system review, provided this, and with your authorization this evening, we'll move forward immediately on that SCADA component, and then thereafter begin work toward that system study. And again, you know, we'll hopefully have something completed around the end of the year, would be our goal, but, but this is a tremendous opportunity for us to infuse some resources from the state level to help to protect this clear vulnerability.
All right, thank you for that update and report. At this time, I'll open the floor for questions. Mr. Merriman? All right, C-9, I will seek a motion to accept the H2O Ohio Fund grant, moved by Councilman Crawford. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Probst. There's no further discussion, we'll seek a roll call, please.
Mayor Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Probst?
Aye.
Councilman Walker?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is appointed officials' reports. At this time, we'll start with our Finance Director, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. We've got some personal issues we'd love to discuss in executive session, but outside of that, I've got nothing else for the council this evening.
All right, thank you. Any comments for Mr. Duke at this time? All right, C-9, we'll move on to Madam Law Director. What do you have for us tonight?
I have nothing for you this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Thank you. Open the floor for questions for Ms. Fisher.
So we're...
So we're rolling out our charging of traffic violations at the municipal level. And Judge McNamee hosted a lunch with myself and the mayor of Bel Brook and encouraged the folks in Bel Brook to consider passing legislation in Bel Brook to do something similar. My question was, would it be beneficial for us to, and I don't know if they have a full-time law director, if they have someone on retainer for them to do that. But for us to go over and meet with them and describe in particular how we've done this and what the specific legislation was that you put together to help us bring that back in so that we could charge at the local?
Well, they can access, that's all on American League Publishing. Anyone can access that on our website. So it's all there. I do believe they use outside counsel.
Right, right. I just think, having met with their mayor and then I met with one of their council members as well, and I think it might be beneficial if we could go offer up at a work session that they have, just to give them a little more background on that.
Okay.
So does that make sense to you for us to do that? Okay, okay. So I'll reach out to them and see if trying that that might be beneficial. They seem very receptive to be willing to do that. So, great. That's all.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Ms. Fisher? I guess you're off the hook. Thank you. All right. Mr. Merriman, what do you have for us tonight?
I'm sure council will be pleased to learn I have several items. First, I just wanted to give council a heads up. We have been following up on discussions pertaining to the 911 call answering and dispatch services we provide. So two points there. One is I have had an opportunity with a couple of our staff members to sit down with the county administrator, had a productive, though not conclusive, conversation. So we've taken the first step. And while no one is excited to, you know, be faced with the prospect of increasing costs, I think there's an understanding of many of the objectives that we are trying to accomplish. And I think there's general concurrence with the basis of the cost-sharing approach. And so that's very positive. So we've got some negotiating to do to get back to some terms that, or to get down to some terms that we can bring back a potential contract successor to council. But again, we're hoping to do that in the coming weeks or months ahead. Second, staff has also continued to explore alternatives to our approach, operationally speaking to dispatch. We have some really exciting ideas that are somewhat time-sensitive that we want to share with council on some innovative approaches that we think we could take. We've been following up on technology that we think can assist us in numerous ways. So we look for an opportunity at your July 24 meeting to discuss that a little more detail with you.
So it's rolling out with Brock 4.0? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, sort of. No, I think these are exciting opportunities and features and taking advantage of tremendous technological advancements that are occurring in real time. You know, I think some of these changes can allow us to have our dispatchers focus on their primary objective, which is helping people in crisis. So again, we'll talk more about that next time. I didn't want to let council know that we continue to monitor developments associated with the state budget. The Ohio House has determined they will come back into session to look at veto overrides. And I think first on that list will be some of these provisions oriented toward property tax. So I think, you know, that is a conversation that will continue. And some suggestion out of both House and Senate leadership that there is likely to be additional legislation looking to further reform property tax. What that will be, we will see in the weeks coming ahead. So we're trying to stay on top of that. Next, I want to present and give some-
Brent, can I just add one question about that? So when you read through that bill in the thousands of pages there, obviously the overwhelming majority of that had nothing to do with budget. A lot of it had to do with operations at the statehouse level.
Yes.
But there were a number of pages that gave direction to municipalities. And some may have been in line with things we're already doing.
Yes.
But others are things that we're not. How are we, besides us perusing this ourselves, is there any notification given from the state to say, by the way, municipalities, we just passed some legislation and here are new expectations we have levied on municipalities that will become effective as of this date?
Yeah. Technically, it is the responsibility of each political subdivision to be aware of the requirements, limitations, restrictions, obligations. It is, that type of situation is one of the really, the strong reasons that we invest in membership in various associations and trade groups like the Ohio Municipal League, the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, because they're very good about prompting. Depending on what we're talking about, certain departments or agencies of the state may have either an obligation or will, you know, follow up with local jurisdictions. For example, oftentimes, if there are things that affect water treatment licensing, for example, Ohio EPA will turn back around and they'll coordinate some communications. But at the end of the day, it is on us. And we, you know, we don't necessarily have the time or expertise to peruse that. But we do try to keep very close tabs on the trade or association resources that we have and make sure that we're responding where necessary.
Right.
A really good example, one, and I think we shared this with council, one minor piece in the bill, which is notable, is we are, all subdivisions are now required, municipal subdivisions are now required to have a cybersecurity-
Yes. That was one of the things I was referencing, is that plan that we are now responsible for.
And so we have that. And I think there's some formalization of that. And my sense is that's probably something we bring back to council and have you, at least through an administrative motion, if not through a resolution, adopt. Obviously, there are provisions within that that we're not going to publicize because that wouldn't make sense. But generally in terms of the approach that we take. And with that, there are also some limitations now that the legislature has put on local jurisdictions on how we can negotiate ransomware. It's somewhat restrictive in what we can do, and we do need to have some guidance on that. So yeah, there are lots of little pieces or even big pieces that are embedded in that budget bill that we have to comply with.
When I went through that, I identified 20 areas that had some delegation of responsibility to us, right? And a number of those, like you said, fortunately, we already have those plans in place. Other municipalities or counties may not have those, but we have those. But these are all things that were given to us with no resources.
By and large, yeah.
Right, right. There are mandates now that we have, like you said. And it's, you know, it's up to us to identify the fact that we've been mandated. And it's also up to us now to fund those mandates.
In many cases, yeah. Yeah, just to kind of put a cap on it, I've already reached out to the Finance Director and the Law Director suggesting that the three of us independently, through our various associations, review the guidance that's coming down on changes and that we get together in the coming weeks, once we see where any veto overrides may land, and discuss what budgetary changes, practical changes, legislative changes we might need to pursue to make sure that we're in compliance. There are always some of these add-ons in the budget bill. There does seem to be a concentration of them this year that would affect us. So we'll definitely, I would say, almost assuredly be coming back with some legislation at some point later this year to address some of these things.
All right. Thanks, Brent.
Sure.
Brent, on that same question, when they set out those budget bills, do they set expectation dates? And are there grace periods for those dates for the cities to respond, react?
Yeah, it depends on what it is. Some things could take effect immediately. Some things are given a specific timeline or deadline. It just, it depends on the particular item. Any other questions on that?
What else do you have for us?
I wanted to present to council, we've been approached, and I think even a couple of the council members separately have had some discussions. I was approached by one of the deans at Wilberforce University, and I'm not going to try to pronounce his name because I'm going to put, I don't want to do a discredit. But he is a, from Ghana originally and obviously works here locally at Wilberforce University, and wanted to pursue with the city of Xenia the possibility of looking at a sister city arrangement with the region that he is native to in Ghana. And I know that we separately had had some conversation after a recent visit from folks, with folks from Albania during the NATO summit. Armenia, Albania. Too many European and African A's.
You're forgiven.
So in this particular case, the tribal king of the region that he is suggesting is planning to be in the U.S. at the end of August.
Yes.
And it would be an excellent opportunity to sort of immediately capitalize on a relationship. And we would have to spend some time in the coming weeks defining what that sister-city relationship would look like. Is it focused on, you know, cultural exchange, economic development, administrative, you know, what would that be? We've done some just preliminary research looking at the Sister Cities International Association. I think the way to organize this would be through a membership with that entity.
Right.
It's $600 a year, I think. So it's a fairly nominal cost, but that would provide some resources to us. And doing some research, there are a number of Ohio cities, larger cities happen to be sister cities with many others across the world. But here in our region, Kettering, Oakwood, Vandelia, all are in the Sister Cities organization and have established relationships. I wanted to get some guidance from all of you before we would put any time or resources into this, to see if you're interested. Again, to be able to capitalize on this opportunity, we'd want to act pretty quickly and probably look to bring back some legislation, a resolution authorizing participation, maybe as early as the 24th of this month. And if you want us to pursue that with Armenia as well, these would be some of the steps we would need to take initially. So I'd be open to your feedback and direction on what you'd like to do.
Let's do it.
Yeah, Brent, let's move.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to press with both. You know, part of the interest with Armenia is there's a great, you know, so the Ghana gives us a coupling with Central State, obviously.
Wilberforce.
Wilberforce, but also Central State with a lot of students coming from there that are students and some faculty, visiting faculty over at Central State, some at Wilberforce as well.
Yes, yep.
But the Armenian connection with Athletes in Action and through the sports context, and that will also help us partner with two major institutions here in our, both in our city and close to our city as well, too.
Yeah, I completely agree. Mr. Mayor, I think that there are some natural connection points that would deepen some of the relationships that we have with some of the institutions right here in our backyard. And the fact that, you know, that these folks are desirous and willing to have a relationship of this nature. And again, I don't see a ton of work going into this, certainly very little expense going into it. So we'll put a plan of action together. And again, potentially look at bringing some legislation back to sort of formalize that as early as the 24th. And then as we would begin to cement some plans on a visitation, perhaps as early as August here, we'll kind of coordinate with council on what that might look like.
Sure. And I think we've had some sidebar discussions with the council that we're not looking to make this be a financial burden to the city, that we're willing to self-fund this ourselves so that either through personal or other private donations for any, you know, like I said, there's a cost to be part of the association, but there's also potential costs to travel and do those kind of things. And we're looking to be, you know, part of the group to help either fund that or seek the funds through the private donors. So we're not putting a burden on the municipality.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's fair enough.
We'll put something together and bring something back. Finally, I don't have the, this evening, if there's nothing else with that. Just wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge a fantastic weekend last weekend with our Red, White, and Blue Block Party and our Sunny Cab Fireworks Festival. Really wanted to say a huge thank you to a number of institutions and individuals, starting with the Sunny Cab family and their donation to help make the fireworks a reality. It was another fantastic show this year. And that's a centerpiece for that. Xenia Rotary for their help in coordinating all the activities at the park. Events Committee that we had in-house here. Specifically, I want to really highlight Carly French, our administrative assistant in our office. I mean, she's worked a lot in the last two weeks and just really stepped up. And as well as other folks, Jackie Potter and Lydia, Ryan Baker and Sherry and Ashley here in our office, just all really stepping in to fill out that committee. Our Public Service Department, they've got a lot of work that they put into the logistics and traffic control and safety. And so thank them for their efforts. Green County, appreciate their donation of their bucket truck to help us expedite putting decorations such up and getting them down in a timely fashion. Wanted to thank all of the council members for your support, your participation in the booths and so forth. A couple of you were very gracious in helping with donations for some of these aspects and in lining up sponsorships. The mayor, Councilman Reynolds, thank you specifically for your help with those things. Our ExRec Committee, a lot of volunteers day of, and they helped to get all of the road closure signs manned so that we can load vendors in and out. It's a very important part. Dick Coach, they allow electricity for a lot of our activities downtown, notably the live music, and that's a big help. Huge thank you to our sponsors of the sand sculptures, which included Xenia Community Schools, Alta Fiber, and Copley Construction. I don't think the folks realize that those aspects are sponsored, that tax money isn't going to that. Those are sponsored, unique art pieces for these events, and we're thankful for that. Harley Davidson of Xenia coordinated our motorcycle drive-in, so we thank them for stepping in to coordinate that. Downtown Businesses for their participation and for their decorations. Xenia Fire and Police, it's an all-hands-on-deck day for public safety, and they put a lot of effort into ensuring that the activity-
Which is a holiday, too.
Yeah, yeah. Which makes it exceptionally hard to get those volunteers. And so we appreciate that. Also want to give a shout out to fire divisions in Cedarville and Xenia Townships for the use of their equipment and some of their staff to help make the event work. Numerous local nonprofits and churches. All these activities downtown are sponsored. They're provided by volunteers. We can't say enough thank you that families can come out to these events. And unless you're buying food, most everything else is free. And then obviously to American Fireworks, they put on another great show this year, and we're super proud of that. So I hope I've gotten most all of the key contributors and sponsors. And the challenge we want to put out there, next year is the 250th anniversary of our fantastic country. It's the greatest country in the world. And to reach that 250 milestone is something that nationally we are recognizing as America 250. And next year, we've kind of resolved, we want to go really big.
Yeah.
So we, I think we'll be looking for additional donations to increase our fireworks show. We're looking to have some conversations on how we might expand some of the program offering with a real bent toward history and citizenship and civic learning as part of our event. So we'll be looking to start conversations on after action from this event in the next two weeks and begin discussions about next year, how we amp it up for a special year next year. So again, thank you to all of you for your support and participation. And with that, I'll be quiet now.
That's great.
Unless, of course, you have questions.
Questions for Mr. Merriman or comments?
No, I just, yeah, Brent, just incredible, right? And what a great family time. Folks were so comfortable being downtown, being able to rotate from the downtown area down to the park. And, you know, I had all my extended family came as well. And they felt really good about being here. And, you know, it's a tough thing afterwards, even, you know, getting parking, because we don't have the parking available downtown. But people didn't seem too frustrated by that. And so just kudos to everybody. Just what an amazing event. So.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
I do have one comment about, so I was going through our city right now. Alta Fiber's installing the fiber. And I just, I've had a lot of questions about that. So I'm going to make a couple of statements. Can you tell me whether I'm getting this correct? I may have been passing out the wrong information. So we don't regulate the installation of that. That's regulated by PUCO, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And they're the ones that give the easements on the property. We don't provide those easements. Is that correct? Or what is our involvement with that?
Under PUCO, they have a legal right to provide utility and to, we can't prohibit them from utilizing existing rights of way that the city controls. We have a right-of-way permitting program, so they have to meet specifications in terms of, they have to submit to be authorized to do work in the right-of-way. We can't prohibit it, but we can regulate it.
Right.
So there is a process and there are a set of standards that they should comply with. But we don't oversee any of their activities when they're out in the field. I mean, that is on them. If they damage property, they have a responsibility for restoration of that property. If they damage or have to temporarily remove city infrastructure, they have to replace it as it was. But no, we don't go out and babysit what they do. They have a right to be there. We actually regulate it a lot more now with our right-of-way program than we did in the past.
Right. And I just, the other comment I make is if folks feel like, obviously they had to do a lot of digging and moving and replacement of lawns and those kind of things. And if folks feel like that that was not done fairly, there's a number to call that to address those things. But it's not through the city.
Correct. They can appeal directly. Typically, the utilities do have assistance lines. But I believe there is also an appeal process through PUCO.
Right. But that's through the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. That's not through the municipality of Xenia.
Yeah. But I just want to stress, they have a legal right to put infrastructure in the right-of-way. We can't prohibit them from doing that. They need to do it in an orderly manner. We can regulate that to an extent. But yeah, they have a- they have, they have a right to be out there.
Right. And I just say, I, I know a number of folks in our neighborhood had some concerns after they came through and did it and they called and did the appeal and they did come back out and do the work to restore their lawns and other, other issues that they had there as well, too. And so that appeal process seems to be working, so I just encourage folks that if you feel like that's happened, that you, you know, pursue that, but don't call the city for that because that's not, we, we're not part of that appeal process.
Yeah, to the extent that we're made aware through any of you or folks' call that there are problems, that is something we can raise with utilities when they come back for their permit renewal process. That, you know, issues have been, have arisen in the past, but most of that accountability is going to fall with PUCO.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mayor? We're going to move on to council comments and reports. I'd like to start with council comments.
Just one quick comment. Unfortunately, I was unable to participate on the Fourth of July for that weekend. I, I, I laid in my recliner from Thursday evening till Sunday morning, sick. It wasn't fun. I apologized for missing, it sounded like it was great. I know I had extended a family in town as well, they went down and had a blast and they said the fireworks were outstanding and the whole, whole setup was, was very nice. So thanks to the city for the hard work again on the Fourth of July festival and my apologies for not being there. As you can hear, I'm still, still trying to get through it. Kermit Carlos.
Thank you, councilman Crawford. Councilman Walker?
No, I'd like to piggyback on what he said, it was a phenomenal event. I was so honored to be a part of that, thanks to the city. We put on a really nice job. I'd like to thank the fire department, the police department, the president of the, the police department. I saw one of my old friends and coworker, Officer Pat Walsh, having, we used to work together years ago at Montgomery County Sheriff Department. He was on the bike and just it was good to see people faces around and the kids. Also, I'd like to thank Heba, our intern, she did a phenomenal job at the booth we had with city council. The fireworks were awesome. I just had a great time. It was really put on nice by the city. And thank everybody for the hard work that they did.
It was awesome. All right, thank you, Councilman Walker. Councilman Crawford, what do you have for us?
Yeah, we had today, we had the property management committee meeting, very, very healthy, very informative discussions on some programs and some initiatives that these, that our, our city management staff has been overseeing and, and to my opinion and just my humble view of it, just very professionally done and being handled. So I just want to thank our, our staff, those that are in support of these things and these, what we do, just, just tremendous job. We're, one of the, some of the topics that, I don't want to get into the details, but I'd just tell you, we covered the topics of housing preservation program and that, that property review program was continued. It has started, it's, it's rolling, it's moving forward and I do believe that the mothballs are kind of out of the way now and so on that. The HUB district property acquisition was discussed, Xenia Station Tended was discussed, naturalization of Purnell Park and Ridgeberry Park was another discussion that we had in downtown parking. And just want to say the, the topics that were discussed and covered was in the best interest for our city, our, our city residences. And I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm just happy to be and privileged to be on council, to be, to witness this and, you know, it isn't until you kind of hang around these people, Brian and his group and, you know, our, our assistant city manager, until you hang around some of them, you get, you get to hear their perspectives, their thoughts on what it takes to make this city better, they've done phenomenal jobs, so. Also want to apologize, I'm kind of like Mr. Probst, I, I had dehydration sickness on the Fourth of July and I missed the entire thing, I was gone, I was, and I just hated to do that. I, I want to just, I don't think, I think you were the only one I told, but for the, for the most part, I, I hear nothing but good things for all of what, what you guys do. I didn't check out intentionally. One thing that I do, if I get nauseated, I'm done. I, I, I'm not effective and I'm done. And I, I don't, I'm not the kind of person to get sick. I never get, I know, I don't catch, I don't catch flus, I don't, but if I get, if I'm down with nausea, it, it takes me out, totally out. But that does, that's not an excuse, but just it is an explanation as to why I missed the opportunity, I didn't even see the fireworks, so. But anyway, I did see him on my screen today.
That's right, that's right.
So anyway, with that, I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crawford. Councilman Reynolds?
At risk of sounding like a broken record, again, the fireworks were just fantastic. I want to thank.
The best in the state.
Oh, 100%.
Oh, were they?
Oh, yes.
Be honest, out of a doubt. I just want to thank our police and fire department, especially Rotary and just a few of the ones that I wrote down here, some might be a repeat, but definitely want to thank Copley Construction, Dr. Lofton and his Xenia City Schools and all Fido for, you know, signing up and just doing the sand sculptures, especially some of them last minute. I definitely want to thank Nelson King and Tom, Tom McCarthy, they were out there for hours with me, moving barricades, I mean, they just, it was a lot and definitely to all the city staff, but in particularly Carly French, I mean, she just, I mean, when I got here at noon, she was already here working, she's been there, she was there all night, I mean, she was red, but she just kept going and she just did phenomenal work, so I just want to give her a special thing, she was just amazing to work with and I know Ex-Rec loves her and it's been a privilege to chair that and that we did a great job with all the events and the Rotary as well with the fireworks, so. And then in August, well, August 24th is our tentative date for our budget committee. Tensive.
Thank you. All right. Anything for Councilman Reynolds? All right, Mayor, we'll go ahead with you, I'll close.
Sure. So I got to participate in the Fairborn Fourth of July parade and they had, we had all the mayors there from the county and we got to ride in Ethan's 19, what year is it? 37, 1937 Jaguar, which was great.
All of you fit in there?
Just the two of us. Ethan and I and about 400 pounds of candy. And I had not got the message that we weren't supposed to throw candy out, but as they tried to accost us in the middle, I said, I don't really care, none of you vote for me anyways, and we were going to throw candy out. And we did get lots of kids, they're all the way, every kid there in the, in the parade brought a bag to get candy. So they didn't get the message either, they were just putting in candy. But while we're going down there, I made kids have, they had to chant, "Let's Go Xenia" before we threw candies. So we had lots of kids at Fairborn chanting, "Let's Go Xenia." So that went out really well, so that was good for, good for us. Also got to go to the, this last weekend was the reunion, the annual reunion of the Association of Ex-Pupils over at the Ohio Veterans Children's Home, the Ohio Soldiers' Sailors' Home. And they're sweet reunion time because they're, the, the last group that graduated out of there was in 1995 and they're starting to age out. And they said that they had more folks pass away this last year than had happened in probably the, the 10 years prior to that. So, but just had an opportunity to hear from them, the memories of growing up at the home and what that meant to them. And what I've heard over and over and over again from, from folks was, this, this literally saved my life, the experience there. And a number of them said they, they couldn't imagine what would have happened to them if that place had not been provided for them. So just kudos to the group that's doing that. They, they've, they've set up a separate ward now to oversee their, their museum that's on campus and they're planning for long-term logistics and sustainment of that museum even when folks that actually have lived at the home are, are no longer around. So if you've not been to the museum over there, I really encourage you to go do that and understand more, more of the history of the home, it's just, just incredible. Had opportunity to have some discussions with some of the folks that are involved with mental health care in the county and more to come on that, but we have a desperate need to, we've got a great continuum of care for folks that are abusing drugs or alcohol, but for those that are suffering from mental health issues and ancillary things, there's a lot of holes in that process. And once again, we don't provide those services directly in the city. We're first, first touch for those things, either through the call center or for our police on the street or our first responders and we desperately need to have a much more robust care strategy for that, so more to come. And I think we may be leading some of those discussions from the, from the, from a city perspective, not necessarily providing all of the resources because we don't have those, but at least identifying where those gaps are, maybe championing some of, some of that going on. I just say, once again, thank you for the folks at Xenia Rotary. I don't know if folks know, they're the, they're the, along with the Sunnycap family, Xenia Rotary is the, the principal funders for the fireworks show. And they, all the Rotarians went out and did a tremendous job of selling raffle tickets and doing that and, and we, there is no huge budget from the city to, to shoot the fireworks. A lot of people are thinking, why are you shooting fireworks off, I'm not paving my street? Well, we're not paying for those fireworks, folks. Those are all donated, okay? And, and a lot of that has to do with the hard work of the Rotarians here in town as well, too. So just want to say thank you, thank you for them. And one other thing coming up as well, too, on the, just to make a comment, on the 27th of July at 10:30, there's going to be a citywide worship service that's sponsored by the Ministry Association of Xenia and there's about 15 churches right now that are signed up to participate in that. So I just encourage anyone, if you don't have a place to go that morning for a worship time, come out to, to Shawnee Park. And I think we had about 1,300 folks out there last year and we anticipate at least that number, but just a great time to come together as a community and be able to worship together, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Brent, do we have an attendance figure for the Fourth of July fireworks?
We'll have a better sense, it'll take about two weeks, so, in another week and a half or so, we can run some of our Big Brother diagnostics as, as Councilman Reynolds refers to it. So I'll have a better number for you in probably two weeks.
Did you say 10?
Oh, yeah, at least, I think the sense from PD and public service and other staff was that this was our largest year yet.
Wow.
Yeah, it was phenomenal. I can't wait, July 3rd, 2026, that will be the next fireworks show. I remember as a kid in 1976, so that shows you I'm old, going to Dayton and watching the 1976, 200th anniversary of our country. I hope to be around.
You're going to be around for 322?
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying. But no, fantastic job. Also piggyback to thank everyone that worked that event. I'd like to thank the council members, I know Councilman Walker, Councilman Cerise, or Councilwoman Cerise, she's not here today, but she was there the entire time. We enjoyed passing out popsicles, toys, information about our community. That was all donated, didn't cost the city a penny on the, on those donated items, so thank you for, you two were here the entire time as well and some of you in the dunk booths, so.
Well, I do have to say, I thought America was about meritocracy, was based upon our own merit and that's what we're celebrating. And I got in the dunk booth and I must say, the folks from A-HOP were a little bit socialistic and they felt that every kid deserved to dunk the mayor, whether they hit the target or not.
Oh, I agree.
I did get dunked 50 times in a row, okay, but that's okay, we, when it was for the kids, but we're not.
It was hot, so you probably did.
Well, I was okay, too, but I, we're going to work on the socialistic bent there a little bit more and maybe we'll work on, on actual skill next year, so.
I'm sure that skin infection will clear up in a few days.
Next year, we're just going to invite the city manager to do it.
They may have to charge for that.
They will charge for that.
They will pay the street.
Then we will pay the street.
I would like to point out and thank our three appointed officials. I had the pleasure, July 2nd, to sit down with each one of you, with a few council members for your performance reviews. Thank you for your services, city, for your input and your time and I want to thank you for taking the time to do that. Also to thank council for, some of you have been here since four o'clock tonight. We know this is a long evening and it's still going to get a little longer. There is a request for an executive session tonight, so at this time, we are going to seek a motion to go into executive session. This is discussed personnel matters per ORC 121.22. I do not know how long that meeting is going to take. However, when we do come out of that meeting, we will take a five-minute recess and then go into a work session to discuss the next plan progress report. You are certainly welcome to stay, you don't have to, but you are welcome to stay. The work session is public, however, will be in the conference room down the hallway. So at this time, I'll seek the motion for executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds and I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ursula?
Hi.
Councilman Reynolds?
Hi.
Councilman Crawford?
Hi.
Councilman Walker?
Hi.
President Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you very much.